The patients. So, like I said, most of our patients are appointment-based. So, patients schedule an appointment with us. They come in at their appointment time. They're registered through a normal process. We have kiosks that help that process go a little bit quicker. Patients are taken back to an exam room. They see a provider. The provider interaction, usually we try to aim for a one-hour door-to-door time or less. See patients satisfied. Then the patient's discharged and they go to pick up a prescription at a local pharmacy or they go home.
Can you... Strike that. As you know, the reason for this application is the site plan approval because of renovation. Can you briefly, for the benefit of the board, explain the renovations and the basic layout of the proposed office?
So, we'll be renovating the entire space. The layout will consist of nine exam rooms. Most of those rooms usually remain unoccupied. We like to room patients as they come in. We don't like patients waiting in the waiting room. Those nine exam rooms are four private rooms and five date areas for quick in-and-out type things, nursing visits, shots, things of that nature, and one x-ray room as well.
At the outset, should this application be approved, how many employees would you have?
So, our typical office functions with three staff. One provider, that's a mid-level or a physician. One medical assistant to support that provider, and one front desk clerk that functions also as the RT, the radiology technician who should the x-rays if necessary.
And what would the hours of operation be?
Monday through Friday, we're typically eight to eight, with Saturday and Sunday hours nine to five.
And you indicated three employees at the outset. Where would those employees be parked?
So, at this site, the employees would park in a larger parking lot to the right, I believe, with the Family Dollar when looking at the street. It's a larger space, not taking up the spaces in front of the building.
And what type of deliveries would you get at this kind of a business?
Typical deliveries are office supplies, medical supplies, things of that nature. There's some mail pickup and some lab pickup. All deliveries, nothing occurs in a tractor-trailer or anything larger than, you say, a delivery van.
And frequency? Could you estimate a frequency?
Sure. So, lab pickups take place just about once a week... I'm sorry, once a day. But things like medical supplies, office supplies, either once a week or every other week really depending on the necessity.
How about waste removal? How is that handled?
So, there is garbage containers for the entire space on the property in that back lot. Medical waste, we usually have picked up about once a quarter. We're very low generators of medical waste, but we do file the appropriate paperwork and we have our medical generator numbers in place. It's picked up by a reputable company, Stericycle. They pick it up. Nothing bigger than large delivery van, things of that nature, and it's usually done once a quarter.
And I believe you mentioned that the average patient time might be less than an hour. Approximate number of patients per hour?
So, because we're mostly appointment-based, we're somewhere in that three to five patients per hour range, again with the average patient being in and out in under an hour.
I have no further questions of this witness.
Thank you.
Just one question. Where's the medical waste stored? For the quarter, I guess, three months or whatever?
Sure. So, most of it is Sharps waste, just from injections, things of that nature. Sharps containers are fairly large, but if one should fill within that quarter, we have a soil utility on property, dirty utility room, and they're maintained there in sealed units.
So, it'll be inside the facility?
Inside the facility, yes, sir.
Okay. Anybody else? Joe?
Just one question. I know you're going to have ibodermic needles. Do you also maintain a supply of drugs?
We do, but no narcotics in-house. So, at all of our locations, there's no narcotic opioid-based pain medications in-house.
No painkillers or anything like that?
Everything would be non-controlled, if you will. Things like over-the-counter Tylenol, Smotrin. The strongest we have is a medication called Toradol. It's a non-narcotic pain medication. It's more considered an anti-inflammatory. Single-use antibiotics, if someone needs, you know, first dose antibiotic, especially if it's late in the evening. Sometimes we'll give somebody a first dose antibiotic before they go home. But again, no opioid-based pain medications in-house.
Does your... Will you be having four labs, specimen pickups, or anything like that? You're with those boxes.
Sure, we do. So, we usually have between one and two different lab vendors in-house depending on the insurance makeup of the area. Usually they're LabCorp, Questor, the primary vendors in the space. Typically, those are kept outside the front door. If the lab vendor does pick up during the hours we're open, a lot of times we'll bring those containers inside and they'll pick up from within our facility. If pickup hasn't occurred though, by the time our staff is leaving, they'll put the containers outside so that they can be picked up during the off-hours. They're not large, they're intrusive.
Any other board members have questions of this witness? If not, does anybody in the public have questions for this witness? If not, Mr. Gashon.
Mr. Intendola.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give with the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do. For the record, Brian A. Intendola, spelling of my last name, I-N-T-I-N-D-O-L-A. I'm a principal of Neglia Engineering Associates and presented the original 2010 application with respect to traffic when this site was converted from a Bigelow motor to the shopping plaza.
How long practicing in the field of parking and traffic engineering?
Actively since 1999.
We recognize your witness.
Thank you. So, he's accepted as an expert in the field of traffic and parking engineering?
Yes, yes.
Mr. Intendola, did you complete an analysis with regard to this parking and traffic and travel to the site of this property?
Yes, I've been to the site on several occasions. I've been keeping my eye on the site since October, but specifically for this application, I did some parking counts in April and recently is today and yesterday, just to see what the parking demand was.
And would you describe the existing site and the existing usage of the site?
If I may, just for reference, this is just a quick reference that I got sneak from. This is the 2018 existing conditions for the board's edification.
I think we need to mark that as A1.
Okay, that would be A1. And then I have handouts that the board wants to follow along. Let me just take one for myself. Thank you. So, just getting back to answering your question, Mr. Gashon, I had the occasion to visit the site on the 10th and the 14th, and again on the 10th, May and April respectively. What we noted is that there is a strike 53 parking spaces. Of the 53 parking spaces, they are broken up into, I'll call them, three areas, and I've marked it on the exhibit. There's Area A has 19 spaces. Area B, which is along Marston Avenue to the north, has 14 spaces, and the back area has 20 spaces. So, what we noted when I went to count car parking utilization is that at any given time, there was, at the worst case or the maximum usage for parking, there was 16 spaces available on-site, and that was on a Saturday on April 14th at 11:00 PM of this year. So, we wanted to see how the parking demand was working because this is an established site. It has its market share. So, I, as a... I like to go back to sites. I had the opportunity to go back to site because we testified that this was the parking that was needed because we had a parking variance to begin with, and it seems to be working out. And if you take the 3,000 or so square feet that's being improved, when that becomes reactivated, that would bring you back up to the parking spaces that was originally proposed for this, and the use that we're proposing, the medical use and the retail use, has the same parking area of 1 for 200. Using that, even if we were to use a 1 for 200 for the medical use, which is about 16 spaces, you would still have enough spaces if you were to just apply the 1 for 200 to the medical use. But what's the benefit of this particular use, because it's not retail and it's appointment-driven, you can control the number of vehicles coming to the site. So, you have the benefit of a successful site bringing in a use that's complementary to the parking demand because it's appointment-driven. There is no... There's never been a line outside a doctor's office, we'll put it that way, you know, to get in. So, we believe that the use, the medical use as described by Mr. Russo would be complementary to the other retail uses, the restaurant use and the laundromat use. So, I think they all work together well. It's on the verge of a shared parking concept, but even if all their peaks mesh at the same time, we're comfortable that we have enough parking on-site based on the, I guess, the 2010, maybe the... Man, it's been a long time. The 10-plus years of use on this site. So, I think that it'll work well. And, you know, your ordinance brings us here, the 2,500 square foot brings us here, but, you know, and because it's retail to retail or medical office to retail, I think it's a good thing because it gives the board a checkup on the site to see how it's working and you have the larger fit-outs. You can, if you have concerns, if it's underparked, you can voice your concerns, but in this instance, I did not see it since it has been built.
And although no parking variance is required...
Yes.
Do you think the existing parking spaces will accommodate the new proposed medical offices? I don't know if you've heard him talk about it, I'm repeating.
Yeah, just to reiterate that, yes, it's a unique use that will fit in and complement the parking use that we have in the retail area.
And any findings and conclusions you need to review with the board?
No, I just, the site is working well, and I think that there's some areas that it's underutilized, the parking, and in the rear parking, they get a little bit more storage than I would like to see, and I think that as Mr. DiLorenzo goes through and does final inspections, that they could be a little bit more diligent, not the township, but the owners, in keeping that rear area a little bit more tidied up.
And any comment with regard to the engineering report of Mr. Harris?
I think we covered everything unless Mr. Harris has something specifically that he hasn't, we haven't satisfied, I'd be glad to take his questions.
And any comment with regard to the letter of Mr. DiLorenzo Rosario?
No, I mean, we're here for site plan approval, and I think it's a good thing that your ordinance brings people here if it's over 2,500 square foot. So, we are presenting the site plan, and so that's why we're here, so no comment.
I have no further questions of this witness.
I have one question, well, two questions, actually. First is, find a chicken. I mean, that's like a traffic kind of nightmare, trying to get in and out of there. I don't know if you're familiar with that, but if you want to visit the chicken and back back out with the difference in grade and the ramp, it's hard to maneuver. I mean, is there any way that that could be improved?
Well, in 2010, we did discuss that, and we come up on a grade, like almost like a parking deck grade.
Right.
Come up on that ramp. It is awkward. I don't doubt that it is awkward, but in looking at how it works, when I went in and out of the driveway, I looked to see if the retaining wall was marked up by cars hitting it, and it wasn't. It's... I was surprised by that, but no, because if it was really awkward to get in and out of there, you would see like people turning on that retaining wall. So, although it is awkward, it does work, and we're just reintroducing a slot that, if it was comparable retail use, could have more demand in the context of the approval. So, what we're doing is an appointment-driven use. It's de-intensifying that pod of parking, Area A. So, yes.
And also, is there signage in like Area A that there's additional parking? Because to tell you the truth, you know, I've visited like that strip mall and I'm kind of unaware that the parking down here is for that also.
I don't allow a lot of people to know about that because that's why I'm in the back, because there's always parking back there. But I think you're right that we should have a sign that when you come up the ramp, additional parking to the north, because it is, it feels disconnected, and the parking is disconnected. So, that is, it's an excellent suggestion that we put a sign that when you come up the ramp, additional parking, I guess, in North Lot, we'll keep it simple. Additional parking in North Lot. I think that just makes sense.
Maybe before you get up the ramp. I've been there before.
My, yeah, my, and I, since I have gone, I go in, I've gone in and out of that lot as well, because if someone, and I think that the idea of medical use here is something that could serve the community, but that ramp does go on a parking ramp and angle, and if someone is having a medical difficulty of any sort and they can't park in the lot, there, I think, is simple magnetism support for something for someone who is parking on the street or parking, to have to walk up that grade. You know what? It's not, but there's no, there's no real secure footage on that ramp. It's, I don't think, I think it could be taken care of easily. Do my board members understand where I'm coming from? We know the angle of that, and if someone was going for medical assistance...
If you parked in Lot D and you had to walk around, would you have to walk up that ramp?
You have to walk that ramp.
No, no, it's connected. It's connected before that. So, you, Ms. Short, you, if you're at C or B and...
Right.
Or in the front, the sidewalk, you catch it here.
Oh, I didn't realize that.
Yeah, yeah, you do catch it there.
Okay.
And so, I get what you're saying, but you do catch it in front of the Dollar Store.
That's great. Yep, no, fine, that's...
Okay. Any other members have questions of this witness? If not, does anybody in the public have questions for this witness?
Summation, counsel? Yes. Obviously, it's a permitted use, and I don't have any other witnesses because it's just a site plan approval. So, all the variances having to do with this are previously approved. The only reason for this application is because of the Belville ordinance that requires site plan approval. There are more than 2,500 square feet as being renovated. The expert testified that he's seen 16 spaces at all times, never less. So, there's plenty of parking available. A recommendation's been made to put a sign, re-additional parking on the North Lot. Obviously, good recommendation. I would hope that it's not a condition only because this particular applicant doesn't own the property. If it could be a recommendation, it would be appreciated. And again, permitted use, no change in the parking requirement, nothing but site plan approval here tonight, and I thank the board for its time and attention.
Thank you.
And I agree with that, but also if the property owner, because it wouldn't just apply to this site but to any of the other lives in the neighborhood, because you're right. I didn't know about that yet.
You approved it, haven't you?
Yeah, yep. But I meant the recommendation, that with the recommendation, not with, not with the strange...
So, you're approving the site plan?
I'm making the recommendation.
Incorporating Mr. Harris' report in the recommendation of the site.
Yeah, yeah.
Someone like to second that motion? Patty?
Second.
Lois Cole, roll?
Mr. Venero?
Yes.
Mr. Sealy?
Yes.
Mrs. Inoradra?
Yes.
Mr. Conti?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Mrs. Shore?
Yes.
Mr. Corbuck?
Yes.
Mr. Sinopria?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next application we have up is PB 2018-03. I'm going to recuse myself from that as I was notified I was within 400 feet, and we're going to take a short five-minute break and come back and finish this application. We have Mr. Gromman here from the Board of Education, and Mr. Sheldon also from the Board of Education. They would like to be heard for the trailer for school number, was it 10?
Are you both going to present the case?
Okay, we have 531 double A, and the school number 10, block 2405, block 33. It's a review and consent for a trailer. Mr. Gromman would just like to sum up what you guys would like to do. Tom Gromman, 163 Dallas Street. I'm the chairman of the Buildings and Grounds Committee with the Belville Board of Education. Okay. I don't know what's coming to this, but all this is replacing, you guys want to answer one then?
Do you want me to swear in?
Yes, we have to.
Will you raise your hand please? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give with the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I'll do it.
Could you just spell that last name for me? Thank you.
All this is, is a replacement of a trailer that was already existing there. It's not going to be used for any classroom activities at all. We're going to have, one side of it is, right now, we lost a building down on Bella Vista. We don't have that building anymore. And our bus drivers are signing in and out on a clipboard on a fence. So, I want to get a trailer so that I have someplace to go to the bathroom, someplace to get out of the rain, and there was already an existing trailer there. The storage and everything's there. It's a little smaller than the trailer that was existing, and...
At the same location.
In the same exact location. Plans were submitted. Yes, you have a copy?
Yes, we do.
We only have the ability to offer advice, so I don't know if any members have any advice they'd like to...
I just have a question.
Well, you can ask it twice.
Bella Vista, you said you lost that one.
There was a building there that, with an office in it, that rented from the, I forget their last names, but they're related to the Frieda family, and the board was renting that building, and the lease was up, so we eliminated that building because the rent was extremely high.
I have no problem with this application.
Mr. Walsh?
Tom, just a quick question. Is this trailer going to be permanent? Because I know the trailer that's there, apparently goes back to 96.
Yes.
But in our, the recommendation at that time was that the trailer only be used, you know, for a period, not more than three years.
Okay. We are leasing the trailer, and I'd like to keep it there permanently. It's a new trailer. After the end of the lease, I would like to purchase it and keep it there. We also have a referendum going on with the school. What you have on this trailer is a community area in the middle and an office on each side. So, the one side we consider our project manager on for the referendum, and the other office for the bus drivers to have something going and out, and I could get a time clock in there so they could punch in and out instead of signing in on a clipboard hanging on a fence down there, I think is ridiculous.
Will the buses still be 10, or will they still stay at Bella Vista?
They were, we're going to put the school buses up behind 10, because we don't have no property. They're all over the street down there, and there's plenty...
Well, you do have property right next to that building.
Yeah, just, that's going to be maintenance buildings, and in future plans, we plan on putting another building there, because also, since we lost that building, our mechanics are working outside on our buses on the ground behind number H4.
But right next to that building...
Right next to the building on Bella Vista?
Yeah.
We're going to put the same-sized building, which is another application, it's nothing to do with this, but the plans are to put the same-sized building right next to there. This way, our mechanics aren't working outside in the rain and the snow on school buses. Any other board members have a question of this witness?
I feel like we're just here to interrogate the board education. How many buses are going to be parked at that site?
I don't know the exact number, but we went over the plans. There's room where they're in the back. What I also want to do, which is in part this application, but I wanted to courtesy the ladies know my whole plan, the school board's whole plan, there's still enough room, because I don't like the way when school changes, all those cars are parked out on the street. So, we're also trying to make plans where we have someone standing in that lot, pull the cars in, let them drop the kids off, and then pull them out instead of having these cars parked all over the street. And we went over the site plan, and there's room to have the buses there and still have the cars pull in and turn around. Any other members?
All right, sphere, who is the faculty going to park?
We're not affecting the partner, the faculty where they are already.
Goes, just out of curiosity, because I think that there was always a concern down at 9 about buses running to warm them up.
We're, are going to post signs where there is no vehicle idling allowed.
Of our buses especially.
Anyway.
Well, no, the buses, the buses burn up, burn up on stuff.
Buses especially, but no vehicle. There's going to be signs posted that there's no vehicle idling. If no one from the board has any more questions, open up to the public. Anybody have a question or comment? Mr. Sheldon, anything you'd like to add, or have said at all?
I figured he had an entire committee. I share different committees, so...
I was ready for them to interrogate.
It does, I don't know.
You want to ask a panel?
There's no more, I'm sorry. No more questions or comments than, would someone like to make a motion to consent to this application?
I'd like to make a motion to consent to this application. Second?
Lois Cole, roll?
Mr. Venero?
Yes.
Mr. Sealy?
Yes.
Mrs. Inoradra?
Yes.
Mr. Conti?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Mrs. Shore?
Yes.
Mr. Corbuck?
Yes.
Mr. Sinopria?
Yes.
Ms. Rika?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Helping us to run our schools a little more efficiently. Thank you very much.
It's okay, I got your name here today. Thank you.
Maybe that one. Yes. Okay, we had a few serial communications. Somebody else was...
They have, 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 they have.
Yes. Okay, we had a few serial communications. Somebody else was...
They have, 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 they have. Now they do that.
Hi, William, here, PB 2018-03, which is 54 and 58 Lawrence Avenue, block 1401, block 18. It's a minor subdivision. Ah, Mr. Gashon?
I'm sorry.
We're ready.
My apologies. Madam Chairwoman, I just spent some time talking with my architect, my engineer, and my client, and there's a couple of things I think need to be changed with regard to the plans, and we would like to ask for adjournment. We'll waive any time constraints in conjunction with that request.
And then no further notices will be given?
We have no problem with your requesting, no notices.
Okay. Thank you. I'm sorry, Freddie, inconvenience, but we did complete one case.
Yeah, we're here.
Thank you.
Pat, would you bring that to the attention of everyone that we train?
So, just give me one second, just for the record, and that's the date, if you would, for the record.
Our date is June 14, 2018.
June 14.
Here, Miss James.
Okay.
You're the number one.
Okay. So, my architect is going to Russia on June 14. So, can we have an adjournment all the way through July 8?
I see that. Sure.
Yeah, let's just get the July date here. Oh, wait a second.
Okay, I got it.
Okay. So, you don't have to be late.
July 12.
July 12, 7:00 PM, no further notice.
And the board will reorganize that July meeting.
Oh, okay.
So, it's been, you're not starting now.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate everybody's time.
Thank you, see you in July.
Isn't it Saturday?
No.
You're going Saturday.
No, just, yes. I've been waiting. Just last minute on the...
So it's going to start now.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate everybody's time.
Thank you, see you in July. Um...
Isn't it Saturday?
No.
They're going Saturday.
No, just, yes. Just last minute on the, um... Just a quick note for our board members. In our planner, we received that Asking the Right Questions in Stormwater Review training tool. It's an interactive training tool, and it's designed for our board. And everyone should have this completed within six months, or by July 1st, 2018, and sitting on the board. So if everyone takes a note of that. Is it on? We're not sure if it's online or it's not. Something...
It sounds like it's online.
But this is something that we should find out.
Can someone find out more detail and let me know?
Board members know about that? Yes, Lois? You know where it is? Does it appear? Yes. It's not the reasonable mark? No, no. I don't write that one.
We'll try to, we'll try to sign on it, get the information.
Right, yeah. So we will wait for that information?
You may be able to give the course now. Seriously, we did that when we...
Okay. Just a reminder, if you didn't file disclosure, even though it's beyond the deadline, make sure you do it.
Right, do it. What do you get found? I'd like to entertain an adjournment motion.
I entertain the motion to adjourn.
Second?
All right, good.
Aye.
See you on June 12.